One eighteen Dawnlands, it's just around the corner from, it's in my neighborhood.
Yes, good morning committee members, Madam Chair. Yes?
Yes?
Uh, let me see if I can turn up my input volume. Is that any better? Uh, would you prefer if I call in?
Right now.
Okay, I'll speak loudly. So. Okay, so. Sure, Gray Barrett, agent for the owners of fifty-nine Holburn Avenue.
No. No.
Uh, no, I believe I covered all the relevant details in my cover letter and the fact that planning and transportation and neighbors are under post. Um, speaks for itself, with the forestry condition. No, that's all this passes the foretastis.
Madam Chairman, unless my colleagues have any concerns, I'd like to move approval of this application. I think it's quite straightforward. Um, there is a fair degree of support, including the neighbors on both sides. I noticed that the height variance is fairly substantial, but there is in fact a mixture of housing forms on the street and I think that what is proposed fits in with the eclectic nature of the neighborhood. So my motion is for approval, subject to forestry condition two and three. And I have a question as to whether transportation is a condition or just an advice to the, to the applicant. Okay, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, so my name's Chad John Baptiste, I'm from WSP, Rebecca Tenhill was unable to attend today. We've submitted a presentation. Uh, I had submitted a presentation materials, I'm not sure if those are available to be brought on the screen, otherwise it can. Good morning Chair, can I, can I begin, apologize? Okay. Uh, good morning Chair, members of, of committee. Uh, my name's Chad John Baptiste from WSP on behalf of the applicant. Uh, with respect to the development at two one, one five Bor Street West. Uh, I'd like to note that there were letters of support that were received, um, late, one of those letters specifically from a resident in the area. Uh, I would also like to thank staff for their support of the various applications. Uh, I'd also like to point out that there have been some ongoing discussions with the immediate neighbor to the south, I was not privy to the discussions, but variances in part do reflect, uh, some of those, some of those discussions. Uh, and then finally, uh, I'd like to note that it's our opinion, the application meets the foretasts. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so the proposed development is located at the southeast corner of Bor and Harcroft. Uh, a site-specific zoning amendment was achieved, was obtained in two thousand sixteen and early two thousand seventeen. Uh, there were two amendments, one that amended the, apologies. Apologies, one that amended the old city of Toronto zoning bylaw and one that amended the new, uh, city of Toronto, um, zoning bylaw. And part of why we're here is there's some discrepancies between the, uh, the two amendments. Uh, so some, some zoning changes were captured in the old bylaw but not in the new bylaw. I'd like to also point out on this slide, the loading area towards sort of what I'll say, the bottom portion of the slide, there's some revisions to that area that sort of necessitated some of the variances. Next slide, please. So various number one relates to various encro- encroachments with respect to the balcony and guardrails. Uh, I'd like to point out that some of these were, uh, previously captured in the old zoning bylaw amendment but not captured in the new amendment. Uh, I'd like to make one small correction with respect to that area highlighted in green. Uh, the note actually read that based on our understanding of the applicants, are the residents concerned that that balcony does meet the setback that they're requesting, which is a seven meter setback. Uh, so I just wanted to, to note that it appears to be only the balcony at the level below, that seems to be an area of concern as I currently understand their presentation. And I'd also like to point out that, uh, if this were a single detached house, the massing would, the setbacks would be similar for that lower level unit. Uh, I'll briefly go through some of the other variances, uh, the next slide, please. So there's one variance that relates to sort of accessible parking areas, um, and not being as close to the elevators, um, however, they are pretty close, so just sort of flag where the elevator location is and where the lobbies are, where those parking areas are located. Next slide. So this is the parking variance and similar to some of the encroachment variances, the, um, the old, the bylaw, the site-specific bylaw that amended the old bylaw did capture these parking rates, they just were not carried forward in the site-specific bylaw that amended the new bylaw. Uh, so these were, these are rates that were approved by council but just not reflected in the new zoning bylaw amendment versus in the old zoning bylaw amendment. Uh, next slide, please. Um, again, this is just a variance related to the elevator core, um, encroaching above the height limit. Uh, this is one of the things that was captured in the, um, old zoning bylaw amendment but wasn't captured in the new, um, zoning bylaw amendment. Next slide, please. This is, relates to the final variant, so this is a, an permeable hard surface landscaped area. Uh, this is a variance that I was referring to, specifically based on discussions with, um, a neighbor to the south. Um, their request was to provide a hard surface area, um, in that portion of, of the site. Um, we actually are meeting the one and a half meter landscape requirement, it's just that it's a hard surface area per their request. That is the extent of my presentation. Uh, I'm not sure if the architect and legal counsel are available, but for the applicant, however, um, I'm happy to answer any questions that there, that there may be with respect to the, uh, application. Not, not everything, I mean, there, due to some of the design revisions in the site plan, there were some, um, some adjustments. Uh, but sort of as an example, the old bylaw contemplated a two point three meter, um, sort of horizontal projection on the second and third level. Uh, we're proposing on level three, um, a three meter projection, so there is a bit of a, a difference. Uh, but the point is that projections were captured, if you look at level four, um, you know, that projection was only meant to be a one point five in the old bylaw, but it is sort of consistent with what was the projection for the lower level. Um, so, and it is, based in my understanding from the app, from the neighbor's presentation, their request for a seven meter setback, it's really to point out that that actually does meet the seven meter setback that, uh, in my understanding from the neighbor's presentation they have a concern with. It, it, a lot of these changes really result from sort of some refinements at the site plan stage for that, for that loading area. Um, you know, it's, it's a tight site and to make the loading area work, a few sort of pillars had to be, had to be shifted slightly. Uh, and so once those, once those pillars shifted, the balcony, those are the roof covering area for those, you know, shifted accordingly. Uh, and that results in some of these, uh, some of these revisions.
I have a question, Madam Chairman. Um, could we go to the north-south building section again? It was, I think, the third slide in the presentation. My, my question is to clarify exactly, uh, the, the opposition is referring to the projection of the balconies into a seven meter setback. And I, I, I found this drawing with the red circles on it a bit confusing, I wasn't sure why everything was circled, but from your presentation, am I to believe that it's only the, let me see, the third level balcony that projects into that seven meters, but then later you said it complies, so I'm, I'm not at all clear, and my second question is, I presume that the, so, the property is subject to site plan control and I'm wondering if you could clarify the, um, the status of that application?
Um, so I'll answer the second question first. The, the site is subject to site plan control and the applicant has been going through that process and it's some of the sort of refinements, uh, through that process that have, have led to the variances, um, before the committee today. Um, and respect to, with respect to the, the first, um, question. Um, so there are some encroachments that were previously permitted in the old, in the old bylaw, uh, including an encroachment on the, um, on the third level to allow for a two point three meter, uh, projection. Uh, based on some of the revisions that have come forward through that site plan, um, approval process, we're looking at approximately a three meter, um, sort of projection. The specifics for the variance sort of relate to some, some of the guardrails and other projections that, that relate, so we've just taken what the zoning examiners applied and, and brought that forward to the committee.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, if we could just, I'd like to follow up on that because that's where I'm trying to struggle to understand, well not struggle, but I want clarification about the third and fourth levels. Um, you were talking about the projection, but the variances for the height of the guardrail, so there is there any variance for the projection?
Um, so my understanding and it, based on the, on the review of the, of the zoning examiner, uh, is that some of these heights, some of the variants that do focus on the guardrails, it's not, um, it's, we're comfortable with the variances based on the, on the, on what's been brought forward to the committee. Uh, that, then there are projections that have been approved, that have been, are already permitted. Uh, and that, what we're looking for is based on this, on this review from the, from the zoning examiner.
Okay, so that I.
It's, it, I know that's not a clear, a clear, precise answer and it's really, and the challenge is some of the nuances to, um, what the examiner felt was, was needed, which is, you know, dealing with these, um, balcony guard heights that, uh, are the guards between the different, you know, units on the balconies. Um, and some of those are, are what the examiner's flagged, the encroachments itself, um, some of which are permitted. Uh, and my understanding from the examiners, what's proposed here is appropriate.
Okay, so that, I guess that, uh, yeah, I mean, I, I wasn't, I don't have the benefit of, you know, we're gonna, gonna, not gonna go through the entire, uh, bylaw, you know, parent bylaw, all the amendments. Um, but I figured, based on the, um, complaints or the objections of the residents, I was confused as to, you know, the issue seems to be the setback of the seven meters and whether there must be something else in the bylaw. So that, that issue in terms of projections, it complies, we're looking at the height of the guardrails, is that correct?
That's, that's my understanding, um, as, as well. Um, now the projection, the height of the guardrails are, you know, because of the, they're taller than what was set out sort of in the wedding cake design and that's what triggers the variance, sort of the, triggers the, the variances. Uh, so just to point out that we do have some projections that are permitted, uh, and then that there's the further heights on top that we're also looking for, for support from the committee for.
Okay, um, I may have more questions as we go along, but that helps, thank you.
Okay, just so I'm clear, I just have one question further to that. So, um, the, the degree or the length of the projections is not in question, those were dealt with in the site-specific amendments that were passed. The only thing that you need the variances for is that you are proposing, um, wheeling heights, um, that are higher than we're, we're in the proposed bylaw. Is that the full extent of those variances with respect to that, from what I understand you had been, just a.
That's, that's my understanding is correct in terms of what's before the.
So the projections were, have already been approved in the site-specific amendments? It's only the height of the barriers that is, is different from the height of the barriers that were in the site-specific amendments, is that correct?
That is, that is my understanding, uh, as, as well.
So that's a yes then? Yes.
Yes, yes, that's correct, that is, that is my understanding as well. The, of course, those barrier heights project and so it's just, it, it, they were worked together.
But conceptually, in terms of the, the, um, the extension into the side yard and, and the, you know, the step back of the building and those dimensions, they were part of the site-specific amendments that have already been dealt with and approved through other processes.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just one further follow-up then, in terms of the height, height variances, um, for the, the guardrails, looking at the plans, are they mostly in terms of what's beyond the height, uh, permitted? Glass, I'm assuming, most of it?
Yeah, most of it should be glass or frosted glass from, from privacy perspective.
Yes, sir. Yes, good morning, I am Tanu Tassina and have been a resident of seventeen Harcroft Road, I've been a resident there for thirty-seven years. Our house immediately butts the subject property to the south. Can we, can we put up the second slide of my presentation first and then start the clock, please? Okay, please, thank you. I'm part of the Harcroft Olympus neighborhood to the south of Bor Street West, it's a compact area that's defined by sharp slopes to the east, south and west into the ravines leading to High Park. In the lead-up to the original rezoning of the subject, uh, site in two thousand sixteen, our Harcroft Olympus neighborhood through its four-member representatives committee, which I presently chair, was actively engaged with the original developer, with then-counselor Sandra Dussette, and with city planning staff. Acknowledging that the subject site had prospects for redevelopment, our neighborhood worked cooperatively to achieve acceptable parameters for the rezoning of the site. Toronto City Council on approving the site rezoning in two thousand sixteen consciously approved variances from its own performance standards for mid-rise buildings. Council specifically included a motion as part of the approval to address privacy concerns of the residential neighborhood to the south of the site. I'm here today to speak in opposition to two of the requested variances, namely request number one and number three. In today's request, in item one, it's been made without regard to council-specific direction in respect to the southerly elevation of the subject property and without contacting or involving the Harcroft Olympus neighborhood. If you could put up slide three, please. I draw your attention in this slide to the requested height variance for the area shaded in red. And the wording says in the variance to increase the height from four point five to eight point five meters for the third floor and from four point five meters to eleven point five meters on the fourth floor. Slide four, please. The requested height variance before you has the unintended result of applying the whole of the parking ramp instruction. This variance text for levels three and four is worded, could result in the unrestricted incursion of levels three and four balconies south towards the property boundary with the residential neighborhood to the south, and indeed we see that encroachment happening. The variances as worded do not meet the statutory intent of section forty-five of the Planning Act, namely to be desirable for the appropriate development. Nor are these requests the way they're worded, consistent with council's own specific constraint in respect of the proposed building southern elevation. Next slide, please. Properly worded text is needed to specify a seven meter setback from the property's southern boundary for the requested height variances for levels three and four. Slide six, please. The phrase setback from seven meters from the southern property boundary must be added to each of the sentences establishing the new height for level three and for level four. We will otherwise have incremental encroachment. Slide seven, please. We believe that if you are inclined to approve, you do so only by amending the height variance request for levels three and four with the additional phrase, setback seven meters from the southern property boundary. With such amendments, the sought-after heights for levels three and four terrorist guards will be permitted, but within unambiguous specified spatial bounds. These amendments, we believe, would be consistent with council's direction in respect to the southern neighborhood. I now move to the second area that I wish to address, namely the applicant's request in variance three to reduce the number of onsite parking spots. Since the original rezoning, the building is now proposed, chose two driveways from the building onto Harcroft Road. These two driveways will eliminate three parking spots on. These two driveways will eliminate three parking spots on Harcroft Road. Today's variance request seeks to reduce onsite parking by six spots. Where are these nine cars now supposed to park? Harcroft is a single block long with fifteen homes and not a lot of on-street parking. Parking demand and options in this part of Blur West Village around the subject property have significantly changed since the original 2016 rezoning. The application then included a transportation and parking study. Since 2016, there has been construction and occupation of a new residential condominium across the road on the north side of Blur Street. And there has been the installation of separated bicycle paths along Blur Street West. Both have changed area parking patterns. There's no update of transportation or parking study for this project. There has been no account of the subject condo's two new driveways. And there's been no assessment of off-site impact of the requested six-spot fifteen percent reduction in onsite parking. I believe that you, as the committee of adjustment, may be as uncertain as I am. How then can you, as committee members, assess and evaluate the appropriateness of the requested variance? Your only criteria can't be an evaluation of the number of reduced spots. I urge you to make the change respecting reference of request number one and to consider carefully request number three. Thank you for your attention on these two matters, and I'm willing to answer questions.
I do. No, I have one, Madam Chair. Yes, please. Sir, this was a very good presentation. I found your diagrams very helpful. But the diagram, what page were I on? One, two, the third, the third diagram in your package. And I guess maybe the fourth as well. You're asking that the variance be amended, I guess, or the wording added that with the seven meters setback from the property line. So if we add that, if that is added to as as you're requesting, does that change the projection of the balconies that are shown in your diagram on number three? If that was clear, hopefully.
Number six is the better slide.
Is it six? Okay.
So if you look closely on there, you see the level three balcony has encroached. It was previously seven meters, and if you look now, it's 6.3 meters. It's already encroached another 0.7 meters into that no-build area. And there's no reason for that other than to provide a three-meter-deep balcony for level three. Like, this is just incremental encroachment into something that was supposed to be a 7.5-meter setback. We've taken it to seven meters from the original 7.5, and now we see it creeping to a 6.3-meter setback. I am afraid to see what the next architect's drawings will be as to what this perpetual encroachment will be in that space. So I think your variance needs to specify the seven meters to at least give the privacy that city council was concerned about when it gave the original approval in 2016.
Okay, sir. So I think I do understand. I just wanted to make sure I did understand what your argument was, is that balcony on the third level is projecting within the seven-meter setback? So the issue may not just is not the height.
No, it's not the height issue.
Okay, okay. It's a it's the projection. So basically, you want to see that the the third-floor balcony shifted right outside the seven-meter setback. Is that correct?
Yes.
So it's not encroaching over the parking garage space?
No, that's right. That's right. So that's why the amendment has to speak to it. Otherwise, they have the whole space of that previous parking garage 4.5-meter height to play in.
Thank you. No, this is great. Your slide was great, and it was it was very instructive. So thank you for that. You've answered my question.
Madam Chair and committee members, are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I know, there's nothing I need you to put up. Thank you. Sure. Michael French of eighty-three Armbedale Avenue, and I'm appearing on behalf of the Swansea Area Rate Payers Association. Just before I get started, my understanding is that the projections go beyond, the balcony projections go beyond what's in the the site-specific amendment. So perhaps I'm not seeing it the same way as the applicant, but that's, again, my understanding. I'd like to note here that the community has long vocalized their concern regarding issues of setback, height, incursions on the angular plane, parking, and traffic in regard to this development. The city acknowledged the community's concern in their October 2016 bylaw amendment application final report were served as the foundation for the bylaw amendments ninety-six, twenty-seventeen, and ninety-seven, twenty-seventeen. Through these bylaw amendments, the applicant was successful in achieving significant alterations to bylaw five sixty-nine, twenty thirteen, and five thirty-eight eighty-six. What we saw was the applicant being allowed to have a parking garage entrance that was 1.5 meters from the rear setback as opposed to the outlined 7.5 meters. We saw various incursions on the rear angular plane, 2.3-meter encroachment for the sixth story, 2.7-meter encroachment for the seventh story, 2.4 for the eighth story. And further, we saw an increase in the the building height to 27 meters. Again, these were dramatic departures from the prevailing bylaws, and were both despite significant community opposition and contrary to the suggestions put forth in the Blur West Village Avenue study. However, despite the city approving these amendments, they expressly indicated, and I quote, "There are additional opportunities to introduce landscaped areas and introduce balcony planters to further address overlook and privacy concerns raised by neighbors to the south. These elements would be considered and secured through the site plan approval process." Later in that same document, after they decided that they felt that on the balance, the setbacks to the angular plane, the overlook and the skyview impacts were adequately limited, the city again expressly indicated that additional opportunities to further address these concerns will be explored through the site plan control process. So here we are now, four and a half years after that report and not through the site plan control process. And instead of addressing the concerns, the applicant is in fact seeking to significantly further deviate from the amended bylaws, and again, dramatically so. In regard to the first variance, the applicant's looking to raise the top of the roof by 3.5 meters to just under 26 meters in height. And on top of that, my understanding is they're seeking to have the elevator overrun another 5.7 meters. I mean, clearly, if one were to read bylaw amendment ninety-six, twenty seventeen, it specifically addresses the issue of elevator overruns and says they cannot exceed the 27-meter building height. In regard to the south elevation, the applicant is looking again for significant increases to the heights of level three, level four, as well as other increases on the additional raised floors. In regard to the second variance, the elevator lobby entrance, and I'm not sure if are you able to pull up the the accessible parking diagram that's been presented by the the applicant? It's okay. It's okay if you're unable to. Or it is. Yes, that's it there. So so I fail to understand when I look at that, why the lobby entrance, sorry, why the the elevator lobby entrance can't can't be in front of P4 instead of entering into a vestibule and a second door and exiting into the passing vehicles? The door can be beside the post opposite the elevator doors. If you look at the the diagram there, and directly in front of the accessible walkway, so that the accessible spots can be at P3, 4, P5, 6, and then again at P27, 28, and P29, 30 on the other level. Again, it would be far easier for somebody to to access the building without having to cross where you can see to be two lanes of of passing vehicles in the garage. In regard to the third variance, reducing the parking, and this is to, I guess, somewhat echo the resident of Seventeen Harcroft, reducing the parking is just going to create an increased burden on the community. It incentivizes developers to limit the parking with their their buildings. In this street is already a busy street. In regard to variance four, there should be no further encroachment on the protected space at budding the Swansea neighborhood. Again, the the bylaws are quite clear regarding this, regarding the penetration of the thick line. Yeah. Okay, I'll wrap it up. So in sum, I was pleased to see that there's eleven letters of objection here. I think we need to contrast that with the two letters of support for the applicant, both which relate filed two sentences and don't address anything specific. One of the residents isn't even anywhere near the neighborhood. I thank the committee for their time and in their consideration, and I urge them to deny the proposed variances. Thank you.
No questions?
I don't have any questions either.
No questions?
Yes, I'm here. Certainly. So with respect to the parking, as I previously had pointed out, that was those, the rates that we're proposing were approved in one of the two site-specific zoning bylaw amendments. It was just approved in the amendment for four thirty-eight eighty-six, not the rate, not the not the bylaw for the New City bylaw five sixty-nine, twenty thirteen. As such, and those rates were based on a parking study based on the traffic work that had been done at the time and were were approved by by council. And if it weren't for that administrative issue, it wouldn't even be a variance before the committee today. With respect to the in the location of the accessible parking spaces, you know, that was sort of worked through with the architect. The variance notes that some of the spaces do meet the location requirements in the opinion of the zoning examiner, some of the spaces don't. It, the OBC requires you sort of come out into a separate elevator lobby space, and then in in terms of having an efficient parking layout, we still have the spaces sort of directly across from the elevator lobby and vestibule, vestibule space. So, excuse me. And then with respect to the encroachments, you know, what we're dealing with is the variance for the committee are relation to those guardrail and balcony height issues. Some of that is as a result of the the shifting in the in the refinement of that loading area, and perhaps it's best shown on on the drawing number two from, sorry, plan number two or slide number two, excuse me. You can, if you zoom in, that perfect, if you zoom in just a little bit towards that southern portion of the site, you can actually perfect, just slide up a little bit, perfect. So you can see that in the light gray sort of the the loading, the loading area, and you can see in part some of the outlines for the truck turnaround. And so you can see sort of a couple of black squares, which are the pillars. And then by the bicycle storage, there's one or two other black squares, which are just help just to cover that loading area, which of course helps deal with noise attenuation and so on in in that space. And so the concern would be, it's not clear to me, the residence concern with respect to if it's the entire length of that there's a concern about that we're projected beyond seven meters or if it's just the area near to the home. However, the approach we've put forward, we feel is appropriate and addresses the the concerns of the residents. It's consistent with the with the zoning. My suggestion to the committee, if there's a concern about further encroachment, that is not the intent of the applicant. And my suggestion to the committee would be to perhaps include a condition that says that essentially speaks to the variance approved per the or or general conformance with the with the attached plans to ensure that there's no sort of further projection, because that's clearly not the, that's not our intent. It's not the applicant's intent to do so. And that might provide a condition that gives comfort that there be something even further proposed as a way to address that that concern. I trust that answers the your questions. If there's any other further questions or clarification, feel free to let me know. It would achieve the seven meters. It's saved for for level three. And where that comes from again is some of the shifting and some of those support pillars that sort of help cover that loading area as the site has gone through the the site plan approval process. So if you tie it to those plans, you would essentially be tying it to what's shown there, which is six, 6.3 instead of seven. However, again, in our view, that is consistent with the intent of the bylaw. And it's, we appreciate the concerns, but with respect to addressing this issue, it, we're through the through the balcony treatments, we're making to ensure that the privacy concerns have been addressed by the as part of the overall approval.
Madam Chairman, I have one further question of Mr. Baptiste. Mr. Baptiste, could you tell me in the the bylaw history for this site, was there ever a seven-meter setback from the south property line proposed or suggested? The 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 presentations in opposition, which which frankly are very thorough and very well done, are depending, are focused on this seven-meter setback, and I'm wondering, it obviously just didn't come out of the out of the blue. Was it part of an earlier proposal or was it part of an earlier bylaw iteration?
I can't speak to those, to some of those previous versions, and I wasn't specifically involved. What I can speak to is when I look to the approved bylaw, there's sort of a one from the from the rear property line. There's a one and a half meter setback for landscaping, and you're allowed to have a four and a half meter height, and that was to sort of address the the parking ramp area, ensure that that's covered. And then you can, and you go back approximately 9.2 meters, and then you can go up to to thirteen and a and a half meters in in height. I can't speak to sort of previous iterations, but that's what's currently approved. And then from that, from that 9.2-meter setback, depending on the level you're at, you could have encroachments into that per for what was approved by by city council. And those encroachments vary depending on the level, but do do allow for encroachments. And what we're looking for in the third level is is some further adjustment to that based on the final site plan design. And what we're looking for in the third level is some further adjustment to that based on the final site plan design.
So the encroachments that were previously allowed would, I understand, then comply with the seven meter concern. And what we have before us is to have that seven meters, because the variances deal with the balcony railing heights, when in fact the concern is the projection of the balcony and the attachments. It sounds, it sounds as though at some point in the past, there was a proposal to project, but that the projections never extended beyond seven meters. And I'm just trying to wrap my head around where that came from, because the community at large seems quite quite solid in favor of this seven meter setback. And as I said earlier, I'm trying to figure out where that came from.
No, I appreciate that. I can't speak to it specifically. I'm not sure if Mr. Peter Kirby was supposed to be one of the deputites today. He's the architect for the applicant. He might be able to provide some further, but I don't know if he was able to register in time. My understanding is he is available.
If I may, I think, I, as a follow up to that question, I'm not sure if it's going to help clarify, but I'm assuming, I'm assuming if the height variances are not granted for level three and four of the balconies, that would essentially achieve the seven meter setback. Is that correct then? I mean, it's a simplistic way of saying it, but I mean, for us to impose a condition saying the height, the variances for the heights of level three and four are granted, subject to be, to it being set back seven meters from wherever the property line or whatever we decide, if that's, if that's, if that's a condition. I'm assuming if we do that, then you probably no longer, the variances are no longer required. Is that correct? Because it, that's what my understanding of what I've gathered from what you, your presentation and the presentation of the area residents, that because it projects into the seven meter setback, it requires that variant. So if we essentially say, basically what I'm saying is if we don't, we would be denying variances, the variances for level three and four, if we require it to be set back seven meters.
The one thing, I understand what the committee's saying, and the one thing I'm looking at is first, so for levels in the old bylaw, the variance encroachments were permitted for two point three meters. In the new bylaw, it wasn't permitted. So if you were to approve the condition as, if you prove the variance as modified, we would still need the variances, because some of the encroachments didn't come forward into the new, into the new zoning bylaw. So that's part of the challenge is some of the encroachments were approved, but in the old bylaw, but not in the new bylaw. Now, but we are proposing some modification to that based on their, on the refined design. And that's what we're looking at. So the dispute disputed area is really limited to the balcony on on level three, and it's sort of, it's limited to approximately two feet, right, point seven meters in terms of the encroachment, and then the balcony guards and heights that sort of result from that. Because it's a wedding cake design, so it's the sort of the balcony guards and heights that are a part of what project. It's not necessarily sort of the balcony levels itself, just sort of depends on the
Okay, so basically then, really, the only piece of the design that's encroaching within the seven meter setback, I mean, that's how the residents explained it, but is balcony number level three, and you're saying it's only point seven meters?
That's correct.
Encroaching, okay, okay. Not only, but you know what I'm saying.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I just have one more question of the applicant with respect to the height variance. Can you go again? What was the necessity of that variance? Why, why was that just discovered now? Is that a design element or manufacturing in terms of the elevator chosen? Or what's the?
So when you say the height variance, you're referring to the elevator core?
Yes.
Increase?
Wasn't known previously.
I can't. I can't answer that specifically. I was hoping the architect would be available as a speaker. Being advised, they did register, but perhaps they didn't get the link so they could answer that sort of specific question. But the variance is just focused on the sort of the elevator cores, not the Yeah, I don't have the rationale.
Quite a significant difference from something that just happened versus what was initially. Do you need me to repeat the question?
Yes, hello. Certainly. Good morning. I'm Peter Kirby. I'm with Diamond Schmidt Architects, working on behalf of the owner. In reference to the question about the elevator overrun height, in the old bylaw eighty six, the elevator overrun was specifically excluded from the height limit. And that's one of the variances that did not carry forwards into the new bylaw. In terms of how far above the roof we are, yeah, we're about an additional kind of one point five, pardon me, one point five meters above. And that's due to the requirements of the elevator and the fact that we have a resident amenity on the eighth floor. So the elevator has to serve that floor in order to gain accessible access for the residents. So we need to extend the elevator overrun for that reason.
Okay, so just to ensure that I'm clear then, originally, as part of the design, the height of the elevator corridor was not calculated as part of the maximum height. Is that correct?
That's my understanding based on bylaw eighty six, yes, that elevator overruns were
And so the site-specific amendment that you had showed the design pretty much as is now, except for the a bit with respect to serving the necessity of change to serve the amenity space.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, because Mr. Kirby is now on the line, I'm wondering if he might attempt to answer the question that was posed earlier about the seven meter setback. And I could rephrase it. Mr. Kirby, are you still there?
Yes.
The residents have have concern that the third level balcony is projecting into a seven meter setback from the south property line. And it is their position that that's not consistent with what was originally proposed and what has been negotiated with the community. I believe I'm stating correctly what their concern is. We've been grappling with whether or not there was a seven meter setback in the original bylaw and whether in fact the third level balcony actually projects further than it did previously. And second to that, we're wondering if there were a way of, if we were predisposed to support the seven meter setback, how we might do it. And my understanding was, one of my colleagues indicated that perhaps not approving the variance for level three would accomplish that, but the agent indicated that he wasn't clear on that. It seemed to flow a lot to you as to whether or not there was a history of the seven meters. And if we still wanted to retain a seven meters, how we might go about doing that?
Certainly, I can speak to that. The seven meters is not specifically called out as a setback in either bylaw, but it is the sum of setting back the face of the building, which is the nine point five meters that Chad, pardon me, that Chad mentioned. And then minusing from that, the encroachment of the two point three meters of the balcony would have allowed a seven meter setback right by the sum of those two elements. And we have moved the guard outwards in order to capture the structural support that holds up the balconies and that allows the City of Toronto garbage truck to transit through the site. In a previous version of this, the garbage truck actually moved down Hush Lane on the opposite side of Mr. Tosing's home. And as part of the negotiations with the city, it was greatly preferred that all of that happens within the site itself and doesn't impact Hush Lane and the residents who live along Hush Lane. So significant changes to the design were needed to accomplish that. And a part of that was these pillars and the structural support above. I would also, if I may, just like to note for the committee that although the face of the wall is at six point three meters from the property line, the face of the guard itself, so where the residents who are using that balcony can access is at six point eight meters from the property line. So if you're, if you're a resident who owns a unit on that level three, the closest you can get to the property line is six point eight meters. It may be possible through extending the thickness of that element, we could move the guard back another two hundred millimeters to achieve the seven meters for the people using the balcony, but the structural support would still be kind of hanging into the space a little bit. It just wouldn't be accessible by the users of the units. I'm not sure how we accomplish that in the committee of adjustment or how we could word that. But I would, I would suggest that perhaps that's a compromise that that meets the intent or the spirit of what the neighborhood is requesting.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
If I may just ask then, just for further clarification, so then the encroachment is as a result of changes in the structural elements of the parking garage, and that's basically what I think I understood you to say, that's the reason why it needs to encroach that amount. Is that correct? Mr. Kirby?
Hello, I'm sorry, I was muted. I apologize.
Oh, it's okay.
It was to, it was to accommodate the City of Toronto garbage truck movement without using Hush Lane at all. And that was one of the, that was one of the things that came up in the site plan application process with the city. And it's much preferred that the garbage truck does not use Hush Lane. And so we made that significant change to do that and creating enough space for the garbage truck to travel through the side is why that moved southward, yes.
I'll start, Madam Chair. I think really in this case, the issue, we've heard about the parking and that the parking rates are captured in the amending bylaw to the old bylaw and that they weren't captured in the amendment to the new bylaw. So I think in my view that that issue is something that had been dealt with, and it was just a technical oversight that they didn't amend the second bylaw. So I have no concerns with the change in parking rate. I understand that the residents, you know, have issues about that. But I believe that that captures the spirit and intent that amendment was captured in the old bylaw. So I don't have concern with the parking. I don't have concerns with the accessible spaces. We have no issues that have been raised by transportation in terms of, you know, changing the parking arrangements for the accessible spaces. I think the real issue is this change to, and for lack of a better word, let's call it the encroachment within the seven meter setback of balcony on the third level. I think Mr. Kirby's comments about the reason why these changes have happened are to accommodate structural changes within the building for the garbage pickup. I think that is a valid reason to to make that adjustment in terms of that encroachment. And he also noted that the guardrail itself is setback further, so I don't have concerns with that variance. In my view, I don't know what my colleagues feel. I mean, it would be nice if we could get the guardrail back, as he suggested, to the seven meters, but I'm not exactly sure how we could do that. So I am in favor of the variances in this case.
Madam Chairman, I agree with my colleague. I'm in favor of the variances as well. I think, first of all, the presentations from the residents were excellent. And Mr. Kirby's suggestion about pulling the guardrail back to effectively keep people further from the property line and respecting the seven meter setback, I think is a good solution. The only thing I would suggest is that the architect and the community continue to work on that. I don't think there's a way that's reasonable to capture that in a variance. And as the Secretary Treasurer indicated, we'd be introducing something new, but I would encourage the architect and the community to continue to work on that. It seems as though there is a solution. With that, I agree with Lisa. The variances, in my view, are quite reasonable, and I would support them.
No further comment.
One other comment, Madam Chair. I don't know what my colleagues feel if we were to bring a motion forward for approval, which is what I likely will do, is to tie it to the plans. I got to find which plan, but to show at least to safeguard that the balcony is eight point three or six point three meters back. I don't know how anybody feels about tying it to the elevations, or at least the one elevation.
I wonder if you might tie it to that section that we were talking about.
Just trying to find which one that is.
It's the third panel in the presentation materials, I believe.
It's drawing number SPA three oh three.
That's what I was going to suggest, if that's the correct drawing, SPA three oh three.
Yes.
I'm sure that's my motion for approval, subject to it being substantially in accordance with SPA three oh three.
I'll second that.
Yes, can you hear me? Yes, it's Bill Crilly, representing five twelve Bathurst. And in a deferral request letter submitted recently, we outlined the our desire to modify replication from a eight-unit residential rental building down to a four-unit residential rental building that would alleviate or minimize a number of the variances outlined in the application.
More questions?
No questions.
Sure, I have no questions. I agree, we should go into committee. Sorry, Madam Chair. I'll stop nodding my head.
I think the deferral request is I I I think the deferral request is is appropriate in this instance. Quite a dramatic change from the proposal in terms of lesser number of units than before the committee. And recirculation and opportunity for comment would be appropriate. So I would move for deferral.
I'd second the motion. Deferred.
Yes, Sam, good morning.
No.
No, no.
No.
No, I think it's pretty straightforward.
I think that the parking, you know, parking study was undertaken in this case. It's been accepted by the planning department. I don't have any issues with the other variants. I think there's still sufficient side yard to the neighboring property. And again, parking planning has indicated no concerns with respect to the application. So if there's no other comments from my colleagues, I would move for approval of the application. So that would be my motion to approve the application.
I'll second. I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Morning, Madam Chair and members of the panel. My name is Tyson Dick. My wife, Jennifer Graham, and I are the applicants and homeowners of Rappahannock.
No.
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 No. Madam Chairman, unless my colleagues have concerns, I'd like to move approval of the application subject to the transportation condition about the existing driveway being used to access the front yard parking. I think the proposal is quite reasonable. It enjoys the support of both adjacent neighbors. And and I think it is a reasonable and appropriate development of the site.
Sorry, Madam Chair, is that a condition? I could not hear what discussions. Okay, because I'm just looking at the plans and it shows a new curb cut here, so. Okay, okay, that wouldn't change the plans, obviously, curb cut or not. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. I understand. It's good.
So I'll second.
I'm happy to second, sure. I have the Miss Hayes that spoke. So you can go ahead, Joanne. Yeah. Yes, I've I've raised my hand to support the motion. Yes, I'm in favor. So you, oh. So just your video or? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Five minutes?
Yes.
Yes, I'm ready.
I'm also ready, Madam Chair.
Yes, good morning. Can you hear me? This is Rick. We have submitted a letter of deferral. But with committee consent, we would like to continue today with our application pending amendments to the variances originally requested. Yes, we're eliminating and making lesser one variants. Sure, this is Rick Palpa from Architecture For All 263 Adelaide Street West. I'm the architect and agent for the owners of 396 Woodburn. The so we originally requested amendments to one and eight. But in lieu of that, we would like to eliminate one, five, six, and eight. One, five, six, and eight. Sorry, I'm confused, yeah. Okay. Correct? Yep. Five? Correct? 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 And sorry, and eight as well? Correct? And as a result of of these requests, the FSI will drop from 0.87 to 0.82. That's number seven. Correct? I I believe it's 158. Correct?
Madam Chairman, I I have a question about the the ability of the opposition to evaluate the change. Are there? There must be. There are new there are new plans associated with the revisions. So the people that are opposed are are responding to drawings that are no longer valid. Is that correct?
Can I maybe comment on the the intent of of reducing the the variance?
Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you.
So there were concerns regarding the the massing in terms of height and length. The variances that are being eliminated address those concerns and bring the the proposal to within the bylaw for both heights and length. I think the objective will will talk to issues of daylighting in the rear. But these are intended to address those. I think the objective will talk to issues of daylighting in the rear, but these are intended to address those concerns. The owner has spoken to some of the neighbors. The comments and the objection letters, I can speak to the massing and daylighting in the rear mainly affecting three ninety-eight. We have a presentation material. Although some of the... Some of the variances we're requesting to eliminate do change this, some of these drawings. The, I think it's pretty apparent where the main wall is in the rear with the materials that we present. Maybe we can go into a presentation. I think it's worth the...
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I have, there's a lot of feedback or something. I can't, I don't know if it's all the mics on. I can't, I'm having trouble hearing what's going on. It's because we have so many mics open, but...
Yes, hello. Yes, hi, I'm here. Hello, committee members and Madam Chairman. I'm here with my husband Matt Stokes. So I am the direct neighbor at three ninety-eight Woodbine. Um, yes. Yes, I was listening. No, unfortunately, I'm not. These are a lot of eliminations and changes, and I do need time to review and evaluate. And also, I would like to note that we, our neighbors, nor their architect, has approached us, and we are their direct neighbor. And I know the same to be true for our four neighbors down as well. So perhaps on the other side, but we, no one has had any discussions with us, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm here. Thank you so much for your presence. My name is Chris Okihira, and we own 404 Woodbine. Yes, ma'am. Well, same as the other neighbors, we'd like to see what it looks like. Would that then mean that we will get a copy of another variance list, right? And then will we have an opportunity to think about it and submit? Yep. Yeah, nobody has reached out to me. The neighborhood is pretty close-knit. We know each other for the most part, and they could have called us or, you know, something, but I personally never heard anything. Certainly, the concern is...
Madam Chair, I don't, you know, I don't really like deferrals, but I think in this case, it would benefit from a deferral. I think the neighbors do need to see what this addition will look like on paper. I mean, even I'm sort of looking at it going, well, I don't exactly, they still have an FSI variance, even if they don't have a depth variance or length variance. So I think everybody would benefit from seeing the draft plans updated and drawn, particularly the neighbors. So I'm in support of a deferral in this case.
I am as well, Madam Chairman, for the very same reason. I think that it's not clear what will be proposed and subsequently built, and I don't think that's fair to the neighbors. I assume from the architect's presentation that the reduction of the variance is going to improve the project, but I do think in fairness to the neighbors, we need to see the actual proposal.
Okay, you know, we do have some presentation materials that do show interesting data of that, but I understand the committee's decision. Okay, so we support deferral if that's the community's decision.
Madam Chair, I'll bring a motion forward for deferral with the usual recirculation fees for the reasons that I earlier stated. Without the recirculation fees then.
Madam Chairman, I support the, I'd second the motion for deferral. Could we indicate that it's to give the applicant an opportunity to discuss the revised proposal and the reduction in variances with the neighbors?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, committee. My name is Maximer Chason from Acadian Design Consultants, and I represent the homeowner of the property.
No.
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 I have one question, Madam Chairman, and a question to the applicant. I noticed that the context for this is a fairly uniform two-story streetscape, and I'm looking at your three-story proposal and wondering if it perhaps is a bit out of character with that streetscape. Could you, could you speak to the height relative to the context, please?
Yes, sir. So actually, to begin with, we are in within the height allowed in the area. And yes, if you look at all the blocks, not just this specific block, you will see that there are buildings that are higher. We do believe that we are pretty much within the height restrictions for the area, and there is quite a lot of building in this, in within, again, the few blocks that are same height or higher than that, yeah.
No.
I don't think what's being requested would result in anything that's not in character with the surrounding neighborhood. I don't think the set back being requested is certainly not unprecedented, and I think the parking situation is sufficient, and engineering has no concerns with respect to the application. Those would be my comments.
Sure.
Okay, so I'd like to move a motion to approve the application. No conditions. As the app is, it's minor and it fits the character of the neighborhood.
I'll second it, Madam Chair. I agree with my colleagues' comments.
Oh, hi. Hi, can you hear me? Oh, hi, my name is Ethan Wong, and I'll be the agent speaking on behalf of the owner of the house. The house is four seven four Montrose Avenue.
I don't need a presentation, but I do have some questions. Okay, sir, though the wall height variances that are being requested, I do know that there are other three stories or two and a half stories on the street, but many of them have more of a sloped roof or a dormer, a larger dormer on the, representing the third story. Do you have any examples of others with the wall heights that you're requesting, or those ones have the same wall heights? That would be my first question.
Oh, hi, Ms. Hayes. To address you for this question, we did a search request for the area within the diameter of three hundred meters, and I found eight fifty-one A Bathurst Street. It's a fourplex and has a main wall height of eleven meters. Right? And also, another example would be four zero two Palmerston Believer is another fourplex with a wall height of three, ten point three six meters.
What about the FSI one point two three? Do you have examples of others that have that, have been granted that degree of variance?
Yes, number fifty-eight Palmerston and has a density of one point five eight. And one seventy-seven Grace Street is a fourplex, has a density of one point four eight as well. And another one's one eighty-three Grace Street has a one point three seven. It's a triplex density. So what we... Um, I believe I tried to find as much as examples within the one hundred and fifty meters. But what I did is I did purchase the three hundred radius one.
Yeah, because Palmerston's quite a ways away from Montrose.
Yeah, what I'm trying to find is a similar that we have is a fourplex. We are applying for the fourplex. So I'm trying to find a similar height and also density that is also fourplex or triplex.
Did you find any examples in the immediate neighborhood? Within a few blocks?
I have here four fifty-eight Montrose. It's on the same street. It's a fourplex.
And is that height or FSI as an example, or both?
Not the height and FSI. It's just a fourplex.
Oh, it's just a fourplex?
Yeah, but I know on Shaw Street, the street west of the Montrose has a lot of...
On the other side of the school?
Yes, oh, actually, on the west.
On the west, okay.
Yeah, on the west. And that street has a lot of three stories, have a really high density and wall height.
Do you have the specifics?
I have a, actually, this one is a picture from my designer. He sent a package, I believe, is in the application. It has a seven zero seven Crossword. Let me see. It has a story. I understand wall height. And the requirement is seven point five meter. I think, oh, this one, three forty, three sixty Harbor Street. And now three forty-eight Harbor Street is it's pretty close to Montrose.
There are, that's also a main, more major artery than a internal street, but, okay.
How about Crawford Street? I have seven oh seven Crawford Street, where the building go all the way up to three stories. I mean, we would like to keep the facade to have three story, but if needed, we can offset the third story to like four feet offset or make a slope ceiling or make slope roof or anything. We can accommodate that.
Well, we can't amend on the fly. So are you looking to amend your application, or you want us to consider it the way it is now?
The examples I gave, is this sufficient enough? Oh, I see. I see, I see. I see, understood. So we reduced from three point, actually, ten point three eight to ten point one five for the main wall. So we will keep the same height. we will keep the same height. Oh, we already reduce it from the application because oh, the for you is 10.38. My designer Glenn Robinoff sends you email, reduce, he told me he already reduced it to 10.15 meters. And he also reduced the building height from 10.79 to 10.3. And also he increased the self landscaping from five percent to forty three point three percent. I think before before February February 10th, it should be go through email or in the application folder. Because I'm picturing going that use all three, like I actually plan to accommodate all three area, all cities comment. All the three common city has. So we are trying to accommodate all three. Also, we have five neighbor supporting letters and one verbal supporting letters from the immediate neighbor. Another neighbor is the written supporting letter. Yeah, I send it to Omta, Omta, yeah. I sent it a few days ago.
Madam Chairman, I can't hear because of the background noise. I'm sorry.
Is Oh, I'm not sure if he changed a plan, but he he said he talked to, I'm not sure, because he said he talked to the committee of adjustment and planned to reduce it to 10.15 for all three heights, for all the main wall on the front, on the rear and on site.
Madam Chairman, I don't know if if I'm responding correctly to Ms. Hayes, but her concerns about height I share. Or her question about height, I think is valid, and I have concerns about height. This is a very uniform two-story side of the street. I don't see, there are many, if any, variations from that. And I have difficulty with the proposed three-story building that's proposed here. And with that in mind, I have trouble with the variance for height.
Oh, I see. So, okay. So you never received a document for the reduction for from city's comment from my designer. Can I can I apply, can I get a deferral? Because I need to get it sorted out and maybe present again. I see. Let's let's Yeah, it's possible. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I'll go, I'll go for the deferral. I have one last question. So next application, I need to include the fourplex in in the description. Okay. Okay, yeah. 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 Okay. 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 One last question. Sorry, my design, yeah, final question, because my designer mentioned the fourplex is is not a minor variance is, you know, is is it applies with the zoning. I understand. Noted. Thank you so much for all the comments, and I'll play for the deferral.
Madam Chair, I think in this circumstance, a deferral is appropriate to allow for some clarity of what the application is actually going to be and to allow the applicant an opportunity to gather their information with respect to potentially answering some of the questions that we have initially raised with this application. So I would move for to approve a deferral.
I'd second that.
I'm raising my hand in favor. I don't know if you can see me, but it's in favor. Is it my video or just everybody's video? Okay, well, I I'm in favor.
Yes, Lynn Sappless here for two sixty, for the owners of two sixty seven Runnymede. Okay, this is a property that is not going under any renovations, is purchased by my client who happens to be a psychologist and is a practitioner for for teens. It it does not require a any parking because all the all the residents of the all the, not the residents, all the members or or clients that are coming to the to the practice are all using the Runnymede Station. The property is directly attached to the Runnymede subway station. My client has been a practitioner in the neighborhood for at least eight to 10 years. The the rooms are being used for clinical analysis. And there is no, there is no, it's not a medical practice per se, although she is a doctor of psychology for us and and will operate out of that clinic with at least four to six members of her staff part-time. Given the fact that this is for for underage adults, again, we went through in detail with the with the planning department about the requirements for parking, and it was agreed with planning extensively that it was not an issue. As as either the kids are coming by subway or they're or they are walking to the facility because it it services the neighborhood. There are letters of support. One of the major supporters is the is the pastor of the of the local church in the area. As as my client Jessica Azale has been working with with the community for many years. I think that's basically it. They're looking for a five-year temporary use and was agreed to with planning instead of going through a zone, a rezoning bylaw to afford both the city as well as the as the client to assess the requirements of whether we go for a permanent zoning variance on the property. She is not, medical practice is allowed in the in the neighborhood as long as there there is a the practitioner lives in the unit themselves. Well, at this point in time, she is not living in the unit, although there are no major changes to change for the house to be to be converted into any kind of medical office. I guess that's basically it. If there are any questions, I'm here to answer them.
No.
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 Yeah, I'm here. I just have been watching on and off, and I just caught, I I think, part of what was just said. But I did hear the part about the parking that apparently was not an issue. So if yeah, so that part has been addressed. I Sure. My name is John Simpson. I live, the address is two seventy Runnymede Road, right across the street from the unit. Yeah, no, the concerns were were regarding parking and traffic. But I guess the bigger issue is the number of psychotherapy, psychotherapists or providers that will be allowed to work in this unit. And the other related topic is the issue of temporary medical office. I'm not really sure what that means, although I did it did get elaborated on a little bit that it's a five-year temporary permit. But obviously, when something is temporary, there must be a plan for when that temporary permit expires. So is is there any information about what is planned at at the end of the five years? But firstly, I was wondering if the number of providers that the number of medical providers or psychotherapists that will be working at any one time is is available or is stated. Okay, could I comment on that? I I think that's a great way to for the city to approach it. The only thing I would comment on that would be the the five years. Like what happens if within one year there were some potential negative effects that that were unforeseen, it then means that there would be no recourse for another four years. Is there is the five-year a Okay, and is that a standard kind of city term, the five years, or is it just the one that was Okay. Okay, so does the app? So so is there, yeah, so I mean, parking was part of the issue. The other issue, is there anywhere stated in the application, the number of actual people working there? Yes. Yeah, it's what the plan would be at the end of the five-year terms, but I guess you answered that. It's 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 going to be reevaluated. And it's the number of the number. Because my understanding is, as you mentioned, if if the what is allowed is a medical practitioner, but I think it was only one medical practitioner based on the zoning. So if there's going to be, from what I heard, nine, that would be something that I would like to have evaluated. Okay. Okay.
Okay, thank, thank you, Madam Chair. And I'll try to answer some of these questions. My my client is also on 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 the call, in case we want to go directly to her. It is one medical practitioner. She is the psychotherapist. She has associates that deal with the teens. And right now, there are four rooms that are going to be used. The house could be renovated for up to nine rooms for one or two practitioners plus associates. So when you're counseling teens, you're either doing it first thing in the morning before school or after school into the into the early evening. There it won't be the property use was was negotiated and discussed with planning at great depth in the fact that in the fact that it is right beside the subway station and right across the street from the objectionist, which happens to be a dentist, who happens to be a single practitioner there. So there are other properties and they're on file in the area around the Runnymede subway station that are commercial that run south of Runnymede as well as north of Runnymede. The big factor here was parking. And given the fact that that it's all for underage underage participants in the in the clinic, the planning department and and our office agreed that the five-year term would be a suitable period for us for us and the city to evaluate if there are any parking concerns on that side of the street. There are some parking concerns on the other side of the street, which I think the the objectionist, two seventy Mr. Simon, I think it was, was mentioning because of taxi cabs and waiting for people coming out of the subway station. That has been that has been exacerbated lately because That has been that has been exacerbated lately because of COVID and and people not wanting to take buses as much up and down Runnymede, which is a major bus line as well. In respect to the number of rooms, right now, there are only four. The house could accommodate nine, but as I said, that would require a second practitioner and more associates. In respect to the use intended use, it they Jessica Sale and her husband have purchased the property and originally intended to go for rezoning. But given given the position that the planning department wanted to take, saying, let's try it for a while. We went to the Committee of Adjustment for the five year use. There may be a zoning application in the works at the end of the five years. At this point in time, we are nobody has made that decision. I think that answers your questions, Madam Chair, unless there's something else you would not would like to ask me.
No.
No.
Madam Chair. Oh, that's great. Madam Chair, I'm in support of this application. I think the five year limit suggested by planning will allow everybody to see whether this use that's being proposed, in fact, there are conflicts that arise from it. It is right next door to Runnymede Station. So I mean, excellent access to transportation. And there are dental offices beside and that's one across the street, it looks like from the, you know, Google Maps. So I don't see this being any impact for the impact than current uses. So I'm in favor of the application and I'd like to bring a motion forward for support subject to the condition set out in the planning department memo.
I'm pleased to second the motion, Madam Chairman, for exactly the same reasons. I think it's a very desirable development in the five years is reasonable timeframe to evaluate if there are any problems that fit with the community.
Yes, my name is Arben Spocky. I am the agent for the owner.
Yes, I'm here. Hello. Yeah, yeah, I I the small group of us neighbors met a few times. And then we met with the applicant a couple of times as well. And all of the items that we we got counsel to draft a settlement agreement. And they're in full agreement with all of them. So it is my expect. We just want to make sure, quite frankly, that these are this is enforceable. And that that's the the critical piece. Aaron Platt from Davies Howe drafted this and he felt that possibly the the committee's decision could have these disagreement as as or compliance with this particular agreement as a condition of the approval. No problem.
Madam Chair, I had similar concerns with respect to the Schedule A and what was what the committee could 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 and could not do with respect to that settlement agreement. Yes. Oh.
Oh, they didn't submit them because they were they were to to submit them. That was the agreement that we made verbally that they would submit the agreement. We would submit the agreement and they would submit the plans. Yeah.
May I speak? Yes. Okay. If you see the the agreement, because with the neighbors, when we talk altogether and we did agree. It says, okay, okay, with the neighbors, when we agreed most of the things has nothing to do with with comments or zoning. It was mostly interior. Yes, I am keeping I'm keeping with the agreement. Okay. The elevation. The elevation is going to have one. No, the drawings I have applied time ago in December. It is deep on the third the third floor elevation. With the agreement, it is with a slope with a barrier window. But in the agreement, the zoning notice comments are the same with the agreement. So no, no, no. The variances, even if you see the agreement or if you talk with the neighbor, they are not discussing variances. Just different things. So they are asking for the front elevation to be brick to fit with the area. And we had we had an elevator before inside. We remove this. But the variances are the same, nothing is changed, and they agreed with that. Okay.
Yes, hello, thank you. Yeah, I totally understand what you're saying. And are you able to tie the approval to all of the plans? Or are you saying only the elevations? If you talk if you tie it to the plans, I'll be okay with that because the plan. Oh, no, so that no, that doesn't. Yeah, are I thought you could tie it to the the new plans.
Excuse me, if Madam Chairman, if we're tying it to the plans that we have before us. For instance, one of the points that was raised would be a problem. The elevation drawings, the front elevation drawing A seven that we have before us shows a stone front and I gathered that one of the points of of discussion was that the elevation is to be brick. So it sounds to me as though the drawings that are attached to the agreement are consistent with what's been agreed, but the drawings that we have in our agenda are somewhat different.
That's correct. We we had thought the applicant was swapping the amount prior to the hearing. But I don't maybe that was simply not possible. So
Madam Chair, unfortunately, the date of the plans, both on what was submitted to the committee and those that are attached to the agreement are the same date. They don't have a revision date on the ones attached to the agreement either. So we can't even go by a date basis.
That that's disappointing. I you know, it's not just me here. We are are, you know, de facto representing a handful of people or a lot more than a handful of people. They left it in our carriage and yeah. Right. 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 One of the what I mean, one of the big issues that we had with the plans as submitted. And we don't know if if the interior floor plan plans were just put in on an ad hoc basis. But they they created a lot of alarm bells for us that it could possibly be something other than a true duplex with the seven bedrooms and an elevator. And it 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 really made us feel as though this thing could ultimately be used as a as a rooming house. Let's put it this way, transient occupancy is what we were most fearful of. Hence, we got the interior layouts to be redesigned to to and and we think they did a great job redesigning the interior layouts. And they met our needs because we we felt, okay, this is a legitimate single family home on the upper level and it's an accessory apartment in the basement. And that's what are almost all of our objections were related to to the worry about a transient occupancy. Can I ask one question? Because I believe that what we can do is enter into a a more rigid agreement with the applicant. As long as we have, you know, if I assume there's an appeal period. And there's been changes to the to the Planning Act in relation to appeal periods. But we I would expect that we should be able to to come up with a satisfactory, more enforceable agreement than what we've put forward here during that period. Okay, and you said if it were appealable, what would make it not appealable? Okay. Okay, so so they, okay, so David and Arbin, if you guys are on side, why don't we let this thing go through? And we're we're gonna, you know, we put our objection in, we object as the plans are right now, David. If it passes, we have the appeal period to finalize a more enforceable agreement with with the applicant. Thoughts? For all of love. Correct.
Madam Chairman, could I make a comment? It it sounds to me as though the negotiations and the concerns are to some degree related to the elevations, but more according to the last speaker to the floor plans in the fact that potentially what's before us could become a rooming house because of the number of bedrooms and the elevator shaft. I gather, and it's an assumption, so I stand to be correct, that I gather there's no concern with the actual wording of the variances. It sounds to me the only way that this issue could be resolved would be if the variances were approved. And as you, Madam Chairman, had suggested, it's tied to plans, but it needs to be the new plans. I don't see a reasonable way of proceeding other than deferring this until we get the plans that reflect what the objectors are concerned about.
I would just make a further comment. From what my colleague said is we still wouldn't, other than the plans, any other part of that, no other part of that agreement is something that we could we could attach to our decision. So, you know, if they are, if if their desire is to have all elements of that agreement. So, you know, if they are, if, if their desire is to have all elements of that agreement that has the plans attached, but there may be other elements in that agreement that are not outlined on the plans, just to be clear, a committee could not, we would not be able to attach that full agreement to any decision.
And to add to that, if, if you, to add to that, on the schedule number three, the agreement basically says notwithstanding anything in the zoning bylaw. So we, we, there's no way we can adopt a, a condition that ignores the zoning bylaw. So just to, to reinforce what Ms. Hayes has said, the agreement can't be part of this decision at all.
No, and, and even if we do attach it to plans, I, I question, you know, requiring building, certain building materials as well. That's not something that typically, that'd be a brick front facade. That's not something that we have authority to impose in any of our orders in any event as a condition. That would have to be enforced privately if that's how they agree to proceed. So there needs to be some clarity about what exactly in the plans, if we do attach it to plans, is enforceable in any event as a condition. So not to muddy the waters, just to clarify, things like that in my view are not appropriate conditions for this committee.
Okay, there you go. Thank you. I was waiting for you to be unmuted. I, I, I would be, would be good with that. I would have hoped that, that the, the plans could be attached, but I, I, not knowing how I can reach out to the others right now because of technology here, I would recommend to them that, you know, committee makes a decision that they make. If it's a, if it's an approval, we, we, we have an appeal period timeline to make sure we enter into a proper agreement. If it is defer and include the plans, we can also get, enter into that agreement and then also know that coming down the pipe, there'd be an approval that included the plans. Or if there was a decline, we, we again could work out an agreement and then we'd come forward to committee in, in support of the application at that point. So I see three ways of us getting through this. Okay. Yes, I'm here now. Thanks. Sorry about that. I appreciate the committee doing the best they can do. We were hoping that, you know, these revised plans did kind of conform to a lot of our issues that we had, especially as the next door neighbor. The dormer on the top third floor, you know, they, they did revise the plans, insert a dormer because, you know, if you look around the neighborhood, there's, you know, to conform to the area, dormers are kind of what's being built in the area and the, the plans that they, I guess originally submitted didn't have, didn't take into account the dormer on the third floor as well. I'm here. I understand. Yes, yes. Thank you. Yeah. Yep. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, could we just clarify that the, the appellants are not concerned with the variances, the wording of the variances that are before us? Am I correct?
Yes, that, that is correct. We, we do not.
Thank you.
No.
No. Madam Chairman, if there are no further questions, I think it's reasonable. I think the application for variances is reasonable and I, I would like to move that the, the application be approved subject to forestry condition number three. And, and that would give the, the applicant an opportunity to negotiate with the objectors to put together, as you'd suggested, a civil agreement that addresses their concerns, but I don't see anything in the actual variances themselves that are a subject to concern. And I think that they clearly meet the four tests.
I'll second.
Favor. Am I back? I'm frozen. I don't know. It must be my internet. I apologize. Yes, I'm in favor. Tricky internet in the city.
I'm here, yes. I'm seeking a deferral, yes. We're, we're revising back to a previous zoning review that already has planning department approval, which is not to add the parking spaces, but by not adding the parking spaces, we have a variance in order to add apartment units to the building.
Well, the deferral will eliminate the parking and there will not be any balconies added to the building, which are actually not part of the variance anyways.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Madam Chair, I believe it's appropriate to defer the application to allow them to address the concerns of the planning department. That would be my motion.
I'd second that, yeah.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me? My name is Magnus Clark. I'm with Paradigm Architecture and Design of 2198 Gerard Street East. Respectfully, members of the committee, thank you for your time. We just received groundbreaking information from urban forestry following our submitted deadline, so we were unable to respond to it in such a way that we could share with the committee. Likewise, we heard more feedback from them at 9:30 this morning. We would like to engage with urban forestry. Accordingly, we would like to request a deferral at this time so that we can appropriately respond to their concerns and their objections. This would entail a material change to the design. If we have a deferral, that would give us an appropriate amount of time to appropriately engage the neighbors and address their concerns in a meaningful way. Likewise, ensure the supportive community planning. We would have a, we would have a revised set of variances. We'd probably end up eliminating four or five of what's on this list if we're able to engage with forestry appropriately.
Yes, I'm Kathy Daly. 27 Lewis Street. I'm the owner since 1997. Um, yes, I was all ready to go, but, uh, okay, I'll defer. Yes, okay. Thank you. Thank.
Yeah. Yes, I am. Yes, I'm. Well, I'm at 30. Yes. I'm at 31 Lewis Street. Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm at 31 Lewis Street and I've been here 2004. Yeah, my only concern. He said some of the things might be eliminated. I'm, I'm just looking at one and seven and eight. So. But yes, I look at the revised plan then and I'm, you know, a deferral, sure, give them time to forestry and we're all reasonable. We'd like to work with this, but some of these, you know, it's a bit of an overreach. I've done their part. Thank you.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me? One, one, seven and eight. Yes, I believe. It's likely that will have an impact on those particular variances. I should also note that with regards to that petition, subsequent to that, following the posting deadline, we've had a number of retractions from that petition of people who have backed out of it. But we'll address that and then we'll address that in the next meeting.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair. Go ahead.
Sorry. I, I, I feel like we've been doing a lot of deferrals lately and that does bother me because it's a waste of everybody's time. But I think in this case, given that the neighbors are not objecting to the deferral, I'm not going to say they're necessarily on board, but they're not objecting to it and there are going to be revisions made. I had particular concern with the urban forestry recommendation and so the applicant has said they are going to address that as well. So I'm going to bring a motion forward for a deferral in this case because I feel that it may, it will have a significant impact on, on the application. So that's my motion for deferral.
Hold second that. Hold a second, Doc.
Yes, hello, how are you? Thank you very much. Sure. Dear Madam Chairman and members of committee, my name is Murat Özgür and I am the applicant for seventy-one Eldon Avenue. Yes, okay, so this is a laneway house and as you can see in the variances, we are asking is, you know, number one and number two is regarding to the laneway house and it's regarding about landscaping, soft and hard landscaping. And before we were talking with the city planning and they asked us to provide bicycle parking because we didn't have a bicycle parking in the beginning and they asked us to, you know, have two bicycle parkings and we add that on our site plan, you can see it on the revised site plan. And of course, all these reduce to soft landscaping and the city planning on our emails when we were talking with them, they say they are all fine with this. And regarding the, again, this laneway suite, we have no variances about setbacks, either from the laneway or from sides. About number three, as you can see, the side setback is, required side back setback is zero point nine meters. We design our house with a setback of zero point forty-five meters on both sides, north and south, and the original, the existing house is exactly like zero point thirty-six meters right now. So we are even moving more from the side setbacks. And regarding the. About number. Again, about, also about the exterior, the floor space index is zero point sixty-five times, so, you know, for, yeah, it's the maximum and we are asking zero point sixty-six, which is a very slightly variance. And for the exterior stairs, we are asking zero point thirty-nine meters from the front lights and normally the exterior stairs are right now, on the existing one, is almost like touching the city line, so the neighbors on the north and the south, because of the, these are very small lots, the exterior stairs are so much close to the city line, to the front setback. And about number eight, that is the roof eaves because of the side. And regarding to one of the opposition that we have, which is sent by eighty-three Dantonio Park Avenue. The Dantonio Park Avenue is a perpendicular street and our lot is seventy-one and on the north of us, we have another lot which is seventy-three Eldon Avenue and they are perpendicular to that. And so they are, there is a laneway at the back and they are like a corner house to the laneway and at their rear right yard, they have a garage and, and after the garage, there is a electric pole, a street lamp, which is already like obstructing their view. And after that, seventy-three has a, you know, parking lot, like a pad, but there's no garage. And on our lot, we already have a garage, which is almost like fifteen feet high. And so I don't think that the proposed laneway suite is gonna impact their view. And plus regarding the memorandum from the development and engineering, we are okay with that, yes, we're gonna, you know, propose the driveway with the two-person slot. We're gonna plan a storage area for the garbage bins and we're gonna communicate with them after with, regarding the access route and there's a street numbering that has to be done and fire trucks or fire hydrants, we're gonna communicate with them for that. And we are all okay that the committee, if the committee approves the variances with the development engineering. And, yeah, these are the things that I'm gonna say. Yes.
Yes, this is Ben Webster at eighty-three Dantonio Park Avenue, can you hear me? Sure. Thank you, members of the committee. I have nothing to present other than the letter that was submitted, so I will go ahead and read that. We live at eighty-three Dantonio Park Avenue, which is located two properties north of seventy-one Eldon. We object to the proposed development of a two-story laneway suite at seventy-one Eldon because it will be located quite close to the back of our house and therefore will be rather imposing. The proposal will result in our house being surrounded by two-story buildings on three sides at all at quite close range. If the proposed laneway suite is built, the structure will dominate the view out the back windows of our house. Our backyard is not very long and the properties south of us are narrow, so the laneway suite will be quite close to our house, less than twenty meters from our back door. We expect that being surrounded by buildings on three sides will reduce our property's value. Current view of trees and sky behind our house will be largely replaced by a building and this does not seem fair, that one person's project should be allowed to directly negative affect some other household. Greater stormwater flow down the laneway, which already experiences strong flows and volumes during weather events, will occur. The proposal includes a violation of chapter one five zero dot eight dot fifty dot ten dot bracket one C. Bylaw five six nine dash twenty thirteen essentially requiring a minimum of seventy-five percent soft landscaping. The proposed development will only have eighteen percent soft landscaping. We do want to make it clear that we are not opposed to laneway housing, generally proponents of it, but not every context is suitable for such developments. We do want to make it strongly stated that if the committee moves forward with approving the application, we would like to require the applicant to make some design modifications to the laneway suite as conditions of approval to help mitigate the impact on our property and our enjoyment of the area. Specifically, we see the proposed design of the laneway suite includes no windows on the north side of the building. This would mean the view out the back of our house would be dominated by a blank stucco wall. This would be imposing and unsightly. We request that the applicant would either be required to install at least two windows on the second story of the north side of the laneway suite that are similar in size to the windows proposed for the east and west side of the suite. Installing windows would result in a less imposing, more residential and generally more appropriate development of the land to ensure privacy for our household and those involved, sorry, those living in the laneway suite. We would request that at least the bottom half of all those windows installed on the second story be frosted. This is important because seventy-one Eldon's property is slightly elevated compared to ours. Without frosting on the windows, the laneway occupants would be able to see directly into our young son's bedroom and into our bathroom. And secondly, we would request a mural graphic or pattern be on the second story of the north side of the laneway suite as a condition if this were to be approved. Again, just to, to reduce the, the imposition of our current view and our, and our experience of the area, sorry, my wife, Dawn Stripler, is also on with me, so I'm just gonna pass it to her.
Hi there, sorry, I just wanted to add a couple quick things to what my husband said. So the two suggestions that we have in terms of installing windows on the second story and painting a mural graphic or pattern on the second story, we see those as like an either or, not, you know, a suggestion that both of them be done. And I just really wanted to reiterate that, you know, the current design with a blank stucco wall on the north face, which would be the face that's facing our house, is really the worst-case scenario. Like, nobody wants to look out their back windows over their backyard to see a totally blank wall that's two stories high. So, yeah, I guess those are, those are our major concerns about the proposal.
Yes. I. Yes, of course, I mean, regarding this north side wall, Ontario Building Code does not allow us to have any windows on the sides. And plus, it's a, it's a two-story laneway house which is allowed by zoning by law. And also, if you consider about, you know, if, let's say, seventy-three Eldon Avenue, if they want to have a garage at their rear yard, they can still build something between us and already, you know, eighty-three, like I said before, eighty-three Dantonio Park Avenue, they already have a garage at their rear yard, which is also, you know, I know, obstructing their view. And there is another street light just in the corner of the south, west, sorry, southeast corner of the garage that they have, there is a street lamp, which is also obstructing their view. And regarding about, you know, the floodwaters, you know, we already have a garage and you can see in this plan, you can see like on the west and on the east side of that laneway, you can see all these garages. So there is already some type of buildings over there, over fifteen feet, sixteen feet height with their sloped roof. So there's already some buildings over there. That's, that's all my, no, I say, thank you.
I have one question, do you know what your current rear soft landscaping is?
Our current lots, I mean.
Is it the same?
The, let me look at just one. The, the. Here it is. And the survey, when I look at the survey, so the garage in the survey is, the existing garage is, even, it has less setbacks, the existing garage is from the laneway, it is only ninety-three centimeters away and from the south, it's twenty-six centimeters away and from the north, it's only eleven centimeters. So this means that the soft landscaping already over that is less than we are asking. And of course, because you see the garage, the garage has a drive-in, right? So there is no soft landscaping at the side of the garage which is facing the laneway.
Okay, thank you.
We, we propose bicycle parking because the city is encouraging the bicycle parking and all still we have some parts that are soft landscaping over there.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
No, Madam Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion. Madam Chairman, I think that the proposal before us is a reasonable one. I don't think the variances are out of line as the applicant indicated. The soft landscaping, which is less than seventy-five, is in large part due to the fact that there's a narrow strip between the, the laneway suite and a portion of that is taken up with the driveway leading into the garage. In terms of the concerns from the people to the north, I appreciate that looking out and seeing a blank wall could be problematic, although there's nothing in the variances that before us that would suggest that there need to be any limits on the height of the, of the laneway suite. The laneway suite is permitted, the, the, the only variances before us have to do with landscaping. I would note that the applicant has gone to some pains to try and alter the north elevation by, on the west side, creating a sloped standing seam aluminum roof. If the aluminum roof material were to extend onto the north side of the elevation, that might address some of the concerns about looking at a blank wall, but I don't believe that that's an appropriate condition for this particular application. Having said that, Madam Chairman, subject to the standard development engineering conditions, I believe that the proposal is a reasonable one and I move approval of it.
My second, I would just add that in terms of the landscaping, there are other properties on that street that have larger garage structures and therefore no lesser landscaping, so I don't think it's unprecedented from that perspective, but I will second the motion.
Yes, Ryan O'Hoye, present for the agent.
I don't need a presentation.
Neither do I.
No. I don't.
Don't.
Nothing at this time.
Actually, Madam Chair, perhaps I could just clarify with the applicant. Are you familiar with planning condition that's being requested in terms of the front yard setback be limited to the front porch and it be limited to one story, are you fine with that condition?
Yes, that's our plan.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify, thank you. Madam Chair, I, I think this one is, you meet the foretest for a minor variance and I think with the condition that's being requested by planning department in terms of limiting the front yard setback to the front porch being one story in height, I think that mitigates any concern about it extending all the way up. So I'd like to bring a motion forward for approval of the application. Like I said, it meets the foretests and it be subject to the condition set out in the planning department memo.
I'm Andrew Trotter from AJT Design, AJ, Agent Designer. Okay, well, I think the main issue with 571 was the, they did write in a letter saying that they agreed to all the variances except the first one of the 19.6 to building depth. That building depth is not for the house. That is because the deck is connected to the existing garage in the back. So instead of having the one foot space between the deck and the garage, which makes it, you know, it was just this little 12-inch thing that, that, that created this building depth, but really the addition is built substantially on the same footprint of the existing addition other than a little tiny corner at the top northeast corner that is going to be squared off instead of having the slant. And then also, item number two, the neighbor of 571 asked that the footprint remain the same, which it will be remaining the same. So they sort of answered that issue with the same, you know, that, the, the, number one was sort of answered by number two, that we maintain the same footprint, and we're happy to tie the plans to the condition of committee's approval. So that's about all I have to say. If there's any other questions.
No questions.
Yes, Chris Verena, 571 Carla Avenue. No, the applicant did not address all the concerns specifically with respect to soft landscaping in the rear yard in the letter that we submitted. We requested that a number of conditions be applied during the construction process. We have had problems with flooding in our basement for many years, which I then corrected by cutting it down spouts. And I've suggested how during construction and post-construction, we can avoid a resumption of flooding, and we'd like to see those conditions be attached to the committee's approval. I know there was a supplementary drawing that was also submitted in early February showing the installation of a sump pump with drainage into new soft landscaping, which we understand the applicant is now going to incorporate about 38%. I wanted to get clarification, I've heard from that, I'd like to get clarification from the committee, is the requirement 50% or 75% soft landscaping for a rear yard? Is that a question I can ask now, or is that something that I should hold until my comments are finished? Is, is the requirement in a rear yard 75% soft landscaping or 50% soft landscaping? Okay. I'm wondering, the, the issues revolve around there's zero soft landscaping in their backyard now, nothing. They are proposing to remove concrete pavers, which will allow for 38%, still significantly below the minimum. We have a great issue in Carla because property slope down Carla towards our property, and we're looking, we don't feel it's appropriate that the neighbors should have any adverse impact on, or 5769 should have an impact on us. We haven't seen anything with respect to, other than they've got a 5% slope indicated in the revised plan. I don't know if committee attaching that revised plan that was submitted in early February to its approval? Can I get an answer to that question? There was a plan that was submitted by the applicant in early February showing the installation, and it indicated, the applicant indicated that they were willing to consent to have that plan attached to committee approval. This showed the installation of a sump pump and a drainage for that sump pump into soft landscaping adjacent to their existing garage. I'd like to... I see. And would it be the same with respect to the other conditions that were articulated in my letters, such as ensuring that there's proper prevention of site drainage onto our property during construction, that those conditions also cannot be attached? Okay. We have a 20-day window to appeal if committee doesn't decide to approve this, is that correct? Right. 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 I'm sure that can happen by way of a necessary of a civil agreement prior to the expiration of the appeal period. Okay. And again, you, as you indicated, or have, sorry, I haven't understood correctly, are you going to attach the drawing that was submitted, I believe, February 3rd by the applicant to committee's approval? Yep. Yep.
Yep, yep, I'm here. Hello? Sorry. The, oh man, hello? Yeah, we can submit, we can attach that, the drainage plan, that's not a problem. Obviously, we've, in, in, you know, increased the soft landscaping as much as we possibly can from nothing, and, and we're fine to attach the, the plans that I submitted as far as the drainage goes. I don't think that the Committee of Adjustments is a forum for laymen to give building professionals advice how to build, so I, I think that the, the drainage plans that we submitted would be, that were submitted with the pink, the pink markings, I'm, I'm fine with attaching that to the condition, that's not a problem.
Right, right. Well, it, it's a start, if, if committee is going to attach that plan that was submitted on February 3rd by the applicant's agent to... Let me see, okay. Okay. Okay.
No questions.
No questions. I, I just, I have one further question to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer. Is, is it impossible to, back to the question of the site plan with the overlay, is it impossible for us to attach the, that site plan with the pink overlays and a condition saying that the site is to be developed substantially in accordance with that drawing? Are you saying that we, are we not able to do that? I, I'm sorry, there's so much background noise, I couldn't hear your response. Yes. Thank you. Madam Chairman, aside from the drainage issues, which I gather the applicant and the neighbor may be able to work out in some kind of a civil agreement between them before the appeal period is over, I don't frankly have a lot of difficulty with this application. I think it's quite reasonable. I think the, the variances are not unreasonable given what is proposed. I think what is proposed is consistent with the neighborhood. I'd recommend approval and move approval, subject to forestry condition number one.
Can I just jump in? The only concern I have is the variance for depth. At 19, we heard that actually on the site plan, it shows that the house with the addition is only 11, but with the deck and attached to the garage, it brings it to the 19. So any friendly amendment in terms of attaching the site plan, that it be built substantially in accordance with, so that they don't build out the entire backyard?
That's fine.
I mean, I know it would probably trigger other variances, but as a safety precaution?
No, I agree.
Yes, that's what I was suggesting. Yes, I'll second it. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
The室内老是太关不着了。
坐电梯，为了rooming house，有点不值得说实话。
他搞好了吗？
是吗？快饿死了。
快饿死，他为什么先吃呢？
他没车，车在我这呢。
啊？没车？
对，车在我这呢，他没法。
Hello? Hello? Hi, it's Mike Fodrick here. I, is it my turn?
I don't, I think we're still waiting for the uh chair to start the meeting.
Oh, sorry, it unmuted me. I thought, I I thought it was my turn, but I'm waiting.
They may have, they maybe, yeah, they might have technical difficulties. I'm not sure, but I'm just standing by, just.
Okay.
So am I. I am too, Lisa. We didn't do sixteen yet, did we? Lisa?
That's what we're doing next, Carl.
Yeah, that's what I thought too. Okay, thank you.
They must be having difficulties.
Okay, that's me then. Sure, uh, I'm Michael Fodrick. I'm a playing lawyer from McCarthy-Tetra. Uh, in this case, though, I'm also the homeowner. Um, and uh, it's my application. Uh, the application is for a laneway house. Um, and I I I have a full presentation I'm prepared to give, uh, if the committee would like to hear it. Um, should I jump into it? I'm happy to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, I don't need a presentation. And no, I don't.
I don't need a presentation either.
I just have one question. Um, as this is a new build, uh, was there some reason that you can't comply with that setback?
That's a great question. Uh, there is, it's the only variance is the setback. There is actually a previous version of the drawings where we were closer to the center of the laneway. And at the request of ECS, we moved the building back to its current location. The the uh, the reason it's very difficult to comply is unlike most laneway houses, we are fronting on a laneway on two sides. Um, so it really constrains the site. Um, I I'll I'll take this chance to sort of address the concern raised by the the one neighbor uh who's down the street who said that he has difficulty turning around the corner. Uh, the variance in question doesn't relate to that issue at all. Um, the the variance in question that did relate to that issue was the required setback from the center line of the lane, which is now removed. And as ECS notes, they're satisfied with with the the proposal as is, as is planning. Um, that provides the opportunity for the state to ever widen the laneway in the future if it would like. This variance uh relates to how far a a a wall with openings must be set back from the property line. And of course, we'd like to put uh windows and whatnot in the exposed sides of the building. Uh, so so that's the, the, that's the intent and purpose of this. In terms of my friend from the street who would like to drive on this trip, which is to push the building back further. A, the building is being pushed back further than the existing as-of-right garage, which has already been there for a very long time. So we're improving the situation, uh, number one. And if we were to retain that wall, that brick wall and to build off of it, we could keep it as bright as it is and we wouldn't need a variance at all. But we've elected and said to demolish it and and move it back. So that's, it's improving, number one. Number two, uh, I I think my friend left misunderstood completely, as I said, the intent and purpose of this variance. It's not meant to create room for people to drive on this setback area. That continues to be private property. There's no easement for anyone to public easement over that area. And we're required to soft landscape that area, which we will do, and you, we're not seeking a variance in that regard. So it's going to be grass or flowers. So my friend cannot drive there because if they did, they'd be driving on the soft landscape and ripping it up. And and furthermore, there is a curb that that delineates the private property boundary from the public. You have to mount the curb anyway. So so any suggestion that somehow uh by moving the building back will make the lane more drivable is completely inaccurate. Um, there is a pole at the corner which is existing for decades and will remain, and that is the pinch point. Uh, and that just stops people from hitting the garage and in the future the the laneway house. Um, so because the planning ECS is on board and and again, we did address the 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 concern. There's, I'll just add one more point in addition to the, uh, you know, we're improving the situation over the existing. I would add that that if you look at the west side, um, you know, the, although we're setting it back in a greater, you know, although although it's not set back to full amount, it is buffered on both the south and the north by houses, not other laneway, not other garages. We're talking about houses that have been there a hundred years, which have a zero setback. You can see one twenty-four drop three is one of them and the the neighbor to the rear is another. So you can set back the laneway house all you want, but you know, there are two houses that are that are in zero setback. So never will anyone drive into that dip and drive out. It's just, it's sort of absurd. So again, eh, the planner actually uh agreed that it was sort of absurd to apply that standard here. But uh, it is a variance and so we're having, so the plan doesn't, I'll also add to the immediate neighbors who I spoke to, don't object. Uh, I actually have a support letter from the only adjacent neighbor. Uh, and and I didn't unfortunately provide to the committee in time, but that's, that's objection from them. So it's the lay of the land. Uh, and we, I think it meets the four tests and we hope you agree.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the support letter from one twenty-two then?
Hi there. Yeah, it's it's, yeah, it's the immediate neighbor to my east, uh, which I believe is one twenty-two. Yeah, immediately, he had, he was, he wanted me to adjust the size of one of the windows and I did. And the revised plans you have before you reflect that adjustment of which you requested and he was satisfied. He's the only immediate neighbor.
Thank you.
Yeah.
No?
Madam Chair, in my view, I think this one, given that it's basically, we've heard Mr. Fodrick, he, they're slightly improving the condition. Uh, there is no setback variance from the center line of the lane, which is often very concerning, or not often, is concerning for transportation. Um, the setback from the rear lot line, um, often neighbors at the rear who are trying to back out complain. We don't have any complaints from anybody on Greenwich Road. So I, in my view, I think this, it meets the four tests. I think these variances are in keeping as well with the, while the current footprint of the garage. Um, I don't see how allowing that to continue will have any further impact or any impact. So I am uh in support of this application and uh I am happy to bring a motion forward unless my colleagues have any other comments. But uh, I I would bring a motion forward for approval. Should I go for it? Yep. Okay, a motion for approval of the application subject to the commission set out uh in the development engineering.
I'll second that.
I'm in favor. Yep.
I I agree. I approve.
I'm also in favor.